And if uh. Looks like. We don't have enough people for a quorum yet. So I can see if I can give. Jan a call and see if she was gonna join us. I haven't heard from her that she wasn't coming, so. I know. Bill Warner isn't coming. So I'll give her a call. Okay, she's coming. That she wanted up five minutes.
I can do that, you bet.
Alright, thanks.
Who's this? One of those afternoons?
Well, it's uh seven oh six. And I would like to call the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission Regular Meeting to order. I am uh, I, Joe has asked me to go through the agenda because uh. We don't have a chairman or a vice chairman at the moment. Then uh. So I will. Try to fill in that role. So roll call and seating of alternates. There there's only the three of us. Commissioner Maskey, Commissioner Fife. And Commissioner Larson. No alternates are here and uh. None, well, I guess uh. Jan, you're here and uh is an alternate now, is that uh?
Yeah.
Your status, okay, so you're seated as a commission member and uh.
I don't know if George, it, I don't know if George told you why I did that, I mean if. If if there's an issue that you don't have enough people, I mean, I'll, I will try to make sure that I'm here all the time.
Okay, yep.
Alright.
Thank you. Changes uh. In the order of the agenda or additions to the agenda um. Agent Wagner, did you have uh? I saw there was another application that showed up in the online file. That wasn't on the agenda, did you want to add that tonight?
Um, no, that's a um. It's a wall, it's in, it's not on the, in the wetlands, so it's it's an upland review area. Application, I'm waiting for some more information on that, but as far as I know, it's an agent approved approval one.
Okay, so then we will not add that to the agenda. And barring that, then uh. I see uh. No need for any. Changes or additions to the agenda. Anybody else uh? Have any thoughts on that?
No.
Hearing none, we'll move on to item four. Which is the approval of the minutes. And I will make a motion to approve the June fifth twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes.
I can second it.
Okay, thank you, Jan, and uh. Hopefully, everybody, has everybody had a chance to review those minutes?
I did.
Okay, and I see Duncan's uh nod in his head as well. I have no comments on the, on the minutes, does anybody else have any comments? Okay. Hearing none uh. I'll call uh, call for a vote uh. Jan?
Aye.
Duncan?
Aye.
And I vote I as well, the minutes are approved by a vote of three zero zero. Next item is public comment, and I see nobody from the public here tonight, and so uh. We'll move on to. Old business. Which there is none. Puts us down to. New business. And we've got permit application twenty-three dash zero seven. William Nallett, seven sixty East Street relocation of pond outlet, partial relocation. And excavation of intermittent water course which drains into tributary of Burnet Brook. Agent Wagner, you want to uh? Try and.
Yeah, I was. Hoping Mr. Nallett would be here, he had, I think he had at work, I'm pretty sure, yeah, he had some kind of training at work, so he was. Gonna try to come, but he didn't think he could. So I've been working with him to get this application together um. Kind of on short notice, but um. Yeah, it's it's part of, uh, it's related to the um, the violation that's also in the. Agent report enforcement actions, I don't know if you guys had a chance to take a look at uh any of those materials.
I, I looked at the application, I. If you had something under the enforcement action, I forgot to look uh. In in that place uh. I thought I had everything I needed in the application, sorta.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's basically the same information um. But anyway, so, so this. Application is, uh, let's see, there's um. There's a man-made containment pond on uh seven sixty East Street on the uh. Let's see, that would be the. The south side of the property. Um, and then there's a intermittent stream that flows from. Into that through a culvert from two. To to uh containment ponds at uh, let's see what the address is, that Hurst, it's at Hurst Farm. Um, which is seven forty-six East Street. So two, two ponds at the farm flow into this third pond. On applicant's property, seven sixty East Street. Um, and then it flows into a stream. Uh intermittent water course that flows across this property to the north um. Under the driveway. Of seven sixty-eight East Street. And then. Into a pond on seven eighty East Street. So. Over the years. All agricultural uh activity uphill of seven sixty East Street has caused. A lot of sediment to go into this pond. And into the brook. So that during heavy rainfalls, the um. The, basically the stream overflows because the channel just doesn't really exist, it's very flat, it's maybe only a couple inches at certain spots. Um, there's a photo. Couple of aerial photos I found that kind of demonstrate this. Let's see, I can share the screen if. See if I have access. If uh Marina, maybe you could share the, or or. Get it up on the screen for me if you want.
Where was it located?
It's um. It's under the. Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission submitted pending applications. And it's. Existing conditions.
Can I just ask a question while we're bringing this up? Is there any issue? So. When Bill bought bought that property, I was a real estate agent, and I, I know Bill. Is there any issues that? Being on, you know, being on this committee?
Um, it's kind of up to you to decide if it's a conflict of interest um.
I mean, it's not, I certainly can make a fair decision, but I just wanted, you know, I wanted to put it out there just to know.
Being that this is a small town, there's, there's a lot of uh, you know, people that know other people in here, so. I mean. If if you feel like it, then, I mean. By all means, you know, I should.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to get out there. Which link, Joe?
It's uh existing conditions. Prior to homeowner site work.
Got it.
And so this. Map here is a topo map, so you can see that it's basically downhill from. Um, seven sixty-eight, and then from the farmland at Hurst Farm into those two containment ponds, which eventually flow into this one, so. I think that's where the majority of the silt came from over the years.
Joe, what it, what is a containment pond specifically?
It's. I don't know, it's, it's actually, that's what um. Another guy that was. That sent me an email for the enforcement action called it, it's, it's actually just a man-made pond, so. I guess in agricultural use, it would be, you know, used to store water for irrigation and stuff, which, which probably. Was what it was for at one point, and it's not, seven sixty East Street isn't being used as a farm anymore, so. Um, we could just call it a man-made pond.
Okay. Yep, I just look familiar with that. Term and used.
Yeah. If you don't mind scrolling down one map, I think. Yeah, see, see, you can see in this one, actually, if you go down to the one below this, it'll be better. So this map is the twenty sixteen aerial photo. And uh, this shows the channel to the brook, and it's kind of starting to split apart. And it, you know, through the years, it kind of goes through various stages where it's like a single channel, and then it. Splits off and braids and stuff because it's getting filled in with the sediment, so if you don't mind scrolling up to the, to this. Second one. So this is twenty nineteen. Um, where it's a really good example of. The stream channel just kind of spilling out into the yard. Um, you can see there's kind of a, like an L shape in the center of the photo, and then it kind of branches off. And it actually flows. Out of the stream channel down the hill and across the driveway of seven sixty-eight East Street. Um, below the culvert, which was designed to carry the water across the pond, so. What the homeowner was trying to do, which was the enforcement action, was uh to fix this problem by excavating. Basically, a new stream. Downhill of. The existing one. And that's all the pictures that were on the map and uh everything, that's when I went out there and got involved in it. And um. He's been very cooperative, um, he wasn't sure, he, he was. Taking advice from his neighbor, which is, who was a farmer. And uh. Kind of did a lot of things that had agricultural use of right, and he, you know, he was just following that, thinking that he didn't need a permit. And uh, I informed him that he did, so. That's why we're here. Um, so his plan is to. What kind of came, came up with together is to leave. The new outlet that he created. Which is at the western end of the pond. So the original outlet came across and the. Let's see, the eastern side of the pond. And went straight across. To like the northern side, so north, like.
Is north up on this photo?
Yeah, so it came across on the, the. Let's see, southeast side, like south-southeast, and then. Exited the pond on the northwest side, so basically it was like a straight line, almost like where that property line is, was, is. It's a little bit. To the left of that, but um. It kind of left that western edge of the pond stagnant. So. We decided to keep. His excavated trench. That wraps around and then bring it back in. To. The original existing stream. About halfway. Across his yard and then fill in. The um. The other trench that he created. If uh. Marina, if you don't mind, we could probably go back to the pictures and I can uh. Show them. What um, what we're talking about. So if you want to back out and go to the applications of. Submitted materials for this application. Let's see, we could have proposed condition, that would probably be the best one. So yeah, basically, here's a drawing of um. Outlet that he already excavated, which is in orange, kind of looks brown in this. Um, so his plan was to. Leave that, move his culvert. Into. A section where he can access it with his lawnmower and then bring it back, bring the, you know. The excavated part back into the. Existing stream, and then he would have to remove some vegetation and clean some of the sediment out in that stream, which is basically. What should have been done years ago, but. Hasn't been, so that would be like normal maintenance. Something like this that had heavy siltation. Um. And then fill his. Excavated channel that he had. And uh, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at all those pictures, you can see. You can kind of see what I was talking about. With um. Yeah, I haven't printed out, it's uh, Marina, if you don't mind going back to the pictures on there.
Before we leave, before we leave that.
Okay.
And the, this drawing that you're showing us, Joe, and it says excavated channel to be filled, so. He wasn't originally gonna go into the. Existing stream. Quite as soon as you guided him to, is that?
Yeah, yeah, because his, the, the part that we were gonna leave has a nice, it, like it has an outlet at the western end, which would. Be better for the pond because it would kind of allow more circulation. And the way he designed, he kind of dug that out and had some rocks in there and has a nice curve, which would slow the water velocity down. But then. The channel that we were gonna fill is just basically like, oh, it was like a straight shot. Um. And it was just, there was no stone or anything in there, it was just like a real big erosion risk. So. As a. But I, I thought it would be better to just join the regular stream and then clean that out. Up to the point where it reaches the. Property line near seven sixty-eight East Street.
And then I think the uh. The write-up, it sounded like you probably wrote that for him.
Yeah.
The uh, it talks about a temporary dam that's installed.
Yeah, I had him the day I went out there to look at it um. I asked him to. Basically, close up his new channel because he had water flowing through it.
I got you, yep.
Um, so I asked him to close that up until the commission had, you know, a chance to. Review the application and see what they wanted to do. Um, both with the permanent application and with the enforcement action.
Okay. Now I'm ready to go to the photos.
So yeah, so this first one is. The pond outlet, the existing old pond outlet. And you can see how, basically how flat it was. Um, where it exits, um, it's just filled with s- silt, and then there was a bunch of rocks that were placed in there to kind of raise the pond level, I guess. Um. Yeah, this is the, basically the old stream channel. So if you go on to the next one. Um, yeah, here's another shot of the existing. Stream outlet and all the vegetation, it's really hard to tell there's even a stream there this time of year. Um, just the topography, it's just kind of flat. There, it's, it's got a little bit more of a U shape further down, but not much. Um. But this area is definitely the worst, which kind of makes sense since it's the closest to the street, to the uh, to the pond, so probably receives the most. Built from the pond. So if you go down, uh, go on to the next picture, please. Let's see, that's the area. Near the pond outlet, his dam. And new channel that he built would be. To the right of this photo. Um, a little bit, so you go to, you keep going down if you don't mind. The next photo. Here's a picture of the pond standing. To the uh, off. Let's see. Yeah, we're on the, like, southwest, west-southwest, basically. So the driveway of Hurst Farm would be on the right. Um. The pond outlet is to the left behind that tree. And the inlet is. To the right, almost directly across from it. And then you can, you can kind of see in this picture how silted the water is um. Probably from. Because most of his work was downhill, well, all of his work was downhill at this, so it wouldn't have been. That, it was probably the work at the farm upstream that contributes to this. Um. So we can go down to the next picture. So here's his graded area. That he. Added, basically, so the existing stream is up in that. Area. Like kind of in the center, top of the photo, you can see like there's a light colored. Band of. Ven- like leafy vegetation that um. That's basically where the old stream channel is. Um. So part of the plan is to leave this graded area that he put there and then seed and stabilize it because it kind of helps. Provide a, you know, it raises the level of it without. Having to disturb the stream channel too much. Um, so it'll help contain some of the water during the high flow. Um, so if you go down to picture six. So here's the, this is the. Canal, basically, channel that he uh cut. He dug this first. So. The, at the far end of the picture is where. Goes into the woods and goes. Over to seven sixty-eight East Street and then into the culvert there. Um, this is the section that's gonna get filled according to our proposal, his proposal. Um. And then leave the, leave the grading that's to the right of the photo um, in place, and then basically just fill this and seed everything. Um. Marina, if you don't mind scrolling down to the next photo. And then, this is a picture of the culvert that. He was gonna move. Closer to the pond outlet. Um, and then. Right at the. Culvert, like where you, there, you can see it's kind of cut away, that's where the stream's gonna bend back and. And enter the uh. The existing stream channel, so then everything. Everything to the north will be filled in. If you don't mind scrolling down again. So this is a picture of. The um. The channel is gonna remain, and it's, as you can see, it's very steep, um, it's very prone to erosion, so. He's going to stabilize it by. Basically creating like a U shape, two to one slope um. And then stabilizing it with rock on the bottom and then. Um. Use a, like a, like a mat or grass seed. As necessary to. Basically build up the bank and stabilize the bank. And then. All that would be. Completed before. Um, flow would be restored to this area, so it would be still running through the existing stream channel, all this work took place, and then once it was stabilized. I would come out there, verify it, and then. Um. You would either put. He would um, start letting water in through it. Finish stabilizing the outlet. So, let's see, we can keep scrolling down. Yeah, here's another picture of the. Stream channel that's gonna remain, and you can see the rocks that he put in there to kind of slow down the flow. Um, so those, those will remain, and then rocks will be, rocks and gravel will be placed in that area. Um, and then the banks will be. Carved out. Two to one.
Question.
Yeah.
Are those rocks in there gonna cause like a silt buildup? And eventually like a water overflow?
Well, they could, but, but the. My thought is that it's in an accessible portion of the yard um. It'll keep it from flowing downstream, and it'll give him a place to clean it out. Because it's, it's gonna keep receiving silt from the agricultural use upstream, you know, as long as that's there. It's probably gonna see a lot of. Lot of silt, so. That's one of the reasons I thought about. Keeping this area because it'll slow the water down and kind of give it an area to build up where he can see it and. Perform as maintenance as necessary to prevent this from happening, that, you know, in the future.
That sounds good.
I was surprised, Joe, that the outlet stream silted up so much. But the pond is still. Not silted itself almost full, you know, you would think all that stuff. Coming down from the upstream farms would. Deposit itself in the, in the pond and just uh.
Yeah. Yeah, and just fill it up, uh, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure how deep the, the thing is, but yeah, it's um. That's something I was thinking of too.
Was he getting a lot of flooding?
Yeah, he gets, during heavy rain, it'll, it'll actually flood, it'll overfill the stream channel and then spill out, spill down. Onto his yard and then flows across. The driveway of uh, seven sixty-eight East Street, so. That was one of the reasons he was trying to do this, was to help out that. Getting kind of annoyed that his driveway was getting washed out all the time. So, Marina, you can keep scrolling down, I can see if there's anything. Else we need to know, there's another. Another picture looking. Oh, this one's looking uh. See what direction would that be? That's like looking south. Southeast. Um, back towards the Hurst Farm driveway. And then you can keep. Keep scrolling down. So this is the pond outlet um. This is the area that he eventually uh filled in while I was there to uh. To prevent the water from going in, and then it, it actually. Breached during the uh, July fourth heavy rains that we had, and then they filled it in with more. Dirt and rock to prevent that. Until the permit was reviewed. So you can keep scrolling down, I think there's a picture of the dam. Oh, this is the area that. The proposed stream will rejoin the existing channel. Um. To clean that mess up and. Reattach it there and then stabilize it and then reopen the uh. Open the channel that he dug. And you can keep scrolling down. Let's see. Uh, this is the. Existing stream channel, this is just. Upstream of. The area where. The. New, new stream will rejoin the old one, so this is part of the one that's gonna be abandoned. Um. Now you can keep scrolling down. And then this is looking downstream, so. Cause the, the picture on the left, there's a little, um, some of the sediment, some of it is from him with his tractor and other, and a lot of it is from. The uh, from the stream. So this is the area where the, the new stream will rejoin the old one. And then he's gonna have to clear some of the vegetation out to maintain the old stream and then his, his idea was to plant some native trees in that area and um. Try and prevent some of that. Uh, invasives and grasses from growing up in that area as much with some of the shade. So you can keep uh, you keep going down, I don't know how many pictures are left. So yeah, so this is standing near. Where the stream will rejoin and then so behind me it would be. This, that stream will be reused eventually and then this looking up ahead, this is the area that's gonna get abandoned. Thought about if one of the alternatives obviously would be to just fill the whole thing in and uh, restore the area that he excavated. But looking at the trees and the terrain to try and get in there, it was a little more difficult. So. I thought it would be a little bit less destructive to work with what he had um. In there rather than try and get into this area to clean it out. So and you can keep scrolling down Marina, I think that might be it. Oh, there's one more, oh, this is the dam that he created, uh, this is in progress, so he put a little bit more in there before he was done, but I was taking the pictures as he was working. So yeah, so that's um, that's basically it. It's kind of uh. Kind of caught me off guard, but I'm trying to work to solve the problem that he was trying to solve um, and try to. Free a little less of an erosion risk at the same time. So, please ask some questions if you have one.
Well, it sounds like that's a, a fairly significant undertaking to put the proper slope that you're asking him to do on that uh, channel, it, it. Looks like uh. It's kind of a U shaped channel now, straight down with the sidewalls into uh. Get that done, it looks like there's gonna be a lot of material taken out of there.
Yeah, that's um. That is something that I was looking at and then um. But I think it would be, I, I mean, it definitely needs to come, come out a little bit.
I'm just wondering what he's gonna do with all the material, what's he done with the material that he's uh, removed so far?
Um, he's just spread it, I mean, a lot of it went into that area that I was showing that was. Gonna remain the, the area that he kind of built up that was next to the stream channel that. You know, the new one that he dug that was gonna get filled in, um, I think he put a lot of it there.
Now, when I looked on the GIS map, you know, and I, I looked uh, for the wetlands, because that was the only. Tool I had at my disposal here, it does show there's a strip of. Wetlands going through, you know, each of those properties over there. You know, was that in conjunction, do you know uh, with the previously existing stream? Or, or are there other wetlands on the property?
I didn't see any, I, that, the wetland map is kind of uh, I don't know, it's, it's. It can be inaccurate at times, so sometimes I, I don't uh, it, it has a uh. A large, you know, area where, where it displays it, I forget what the disclaimer on it is, but um. Anyway, yeah, it's, it's pretty sandy soil, so it's kind of limited to the area around the existing stream.
Now, I was just trying to make sure we weren't depositing material into uh, some wetlands or something over there.
Yeah, no, it's, it was um. I mean, it's just basically part of the water force that, that. As it changed, I mean, so it's, yeah, it, it's. Basically, it looks, looks too sandy to.
It's a good sized property anyways. I mean, if I recall, I'm trying to think how long he's owned that property, but I. I, I'm thinking the only wetlands that at the time that he bought it was that pond. To do anything.
Jan or Duncan, did you uh, guys have any questions uh, for Joe at this point?
I think that all sounds pretty good to me, to be honest. I mean, from the pictures, it looks like, you know, there's a plan and from what Joe was saying, it sounds like, you know, there's definitely a plan that sounded good to me.
Okay, yeah, I. I agree uh, that uh, it, it seems to uh. Have been an improvement from what the property owner was trying to do initially.
Cause he's really doing it for his neighbor, right? I mean, that's where the bigger issue is.
Yeah, I mean, that's what he, he was telling me, he was trying to, trying to fix it for his neighbor and he was just trying to make his property nicer. He has no plans to build anything there, so it's basically a landscaping, you know. Trying to improve the health of the pond, he was talking about, you know, he has. Had fish tanks in the past and he knows that, you know, having an outlet and an inlet right on the top and nothing on the. You know, on the other end of the pond can create circulation issues, so he's trying to. Make it healthier, he was just kind of going about it in a uh, you know, kind of a crude way.
Duncan or Jan, do uh, either of you think uh, there would be value in. Taking a site visit to go out and actually look at what's really there, I know uh. Joe's done a pretty good job of uh, did a very good job of capturing what's going on with the photos, but uh. Uh, sometimes seeing it uh. All in one picture, you know, as opposed to the, the uh, little pieces uh, that we look at with photos. Helps better understand.
Yeah, I, I certainly would not be opposed to going and taking a look.
Yeah, I always think it's a. A good idea to go actually, you put eyes on the work site and uh. So uh.
It's a good idea, I mean, I'm gonna tell you, that's, that's why I backed off of this committee is because right now I, I wouldn't be able to do a site visit.
Okay, yep. Okay, I'll, I'll hold that thought for a minute, the other. The other question, Joe, that I had when I started looking at the magnitude of the excavation going on. Is whether or not this fell into the category of a significant activity. And I think you can certainly build a case that it does. I know that if we deemed it a significant activity. The uh, that would require us to go and, and hold a public hearing. Which isn't the end of the world, but uh.
Yeah, I was trying to think about that. Because the amount of, of. Work, you know, relocating it would be, I mean, relocating water force, yes, it's. Could be considered it, but at the same time, nothing, you know, there's like no development of the property that's going on right now too. Which was the, you know, the other thing I was thinking about, which would make it. Less significant, but it's, it is the decision of the commission as to whether or not it should be considered a significant impact.
So, when, when I look uh. For uh, Duncan and Jan, this is, you know, on page five of our regulations under section two twenty-nine. Uh, item B, any activity which substantially changes the natural channel. Or may inhibit the natural dynamics of a water course system would be viewed as a significant activity. And I could probably. Do any activity involving disposition, removal of material, you know, that kind of thing, but. It almost seems to me that uh. We do meet the requirement for a significant activity impact. Although it's for. A good beneficial reason.
And it's not changing the, the, the start of the end, right? It's just the middle that you're, it's just moving.
Yeah, I mean, no, water is getting removed from the system or. You know, it's like, it's, it's the same system, it's basically just being rerouted so that it can, it can actually like flow. The way it's intended and into the tributary and then into Burnout Brook instead of across the.
Right.
The lawn and into the ground.
Significant, that word significant, if you were changing like at Hearst Farms to change it so that it's.
Yeah, if you were like diverting it.
Heading to, to Bill's property or whatever.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, he's not increasing the water flow or.
Right.
In another body of water to it or.
Not adding a pond and not adding an inlet, right, there's no, there's no change, it's just that curve really on his property.
Which I think is beneficial because it would be slowing down the speed of the water anyway.
Yep.
Which will help with reducing erosion.
Right.
So I, I think we are moving in a positive direction, not, not taking a step back for sure.
Okay. I think I agree with the. All that discussion. That we're, we're certainly heading in a positive direction. Whether or not that takes away from be it significant or not, I don't know, I think the end result is gonna be better than it is. Uh, starting now. I guess the only other question, you, that struck me as strange is, is you were going through that with us, Joe, is it seemed like. You had mentioned where either this owner or the previous owner had built up the outlet stream. To keep the water level in the pond higher. And, and my question was, when I saw the depth of the ditch coming out of that. You know, it's certainly gonna lower the pond, I guess, since he's not using it for agriculture, he maybe. Doesn't care, but that, that is uh. Gonna be a consequence, whether or not it's an intended consequence of what he's doing. Um, I don't know, and, and I'm not sure I care one way or another.
Yeah, I mean, he doesn't have animals on the property or anything like that, so using it for.
No, but where does the water go that, that leaves that pond, Joe?
So that goes down um. Goes down through um, like kind of follows East Street and then crosses Boston Hill Road, so it goes under there and then. Continues along East Street and eventually flows into Burnout Brook. Near the bridge on East Street.
Okay, so we're not creating a problem for a different neighbor by increasing the flow out of the pond.
Well, it should be the, the same amount of water, because you're not um. You're not increasing the amount of water flowing into the pond, it's just like, it would be flowing through the pond quicker.
That uh, I think that sounds reasonable as well, the.
Are there any issues from Hearst to Nolette? Uh, is there any issues with that? Stream, whatever?
Oh, the um.
First farm, right?
Yeah. No, it's, it's all uh, in a culvert, which I'm not sure.
Right, so it's not, there's no effect to anything.
Yeah, it shouldn't, it goes from pond to culvert to pond to culvert to seven sixty.
Yeah.
Is, do any of the commission members want to make a motion that we hold a site walk? And if we're, you know, if we're convinced that it's not a significant activity and we've got it well documented, I'm not sure that uh, that I. See as much necessity for it as when we first started out looking at uh, at that big trench there, I guess. You know, the real. It's real cruxed uh, of the thing, and, and it would be Agent Wagner's to uh. Make sure is that we get the, the nice slope that he was talking about uh, on uh. On the side, so it's not uh. In a wash, wash away all his uh, you know, all the edges. And that sort of thing, and, and you say he was gonna line, line the edges with some kind of stone or something there, Joe?
Yeah, he's gonna use uh, he has a bunch of stones on his property from doing um. Doing the landscape and work, so he's gonna use those and he's gonna put those around the, on the bottom of the stream channel to kind of. Slow the water down and create ripples in the water course and then. Probably bring in some gravel to fill in the rest of it, so the, the base of the stream will be gravel on the sides of the grass.
I'm just gonna say from knowing Bill, as long as I've known him, um, he's not gonna do it half assed, he, he. He does, he's a perfectionist, he really is a perfectionist. If you saw the inside of that house, you, you would know what I'm talking about.
Okay, nope, I just uh.
You know.
I've got a little stream running uh, on one of the, the sides of my uh. My property here and when it gets flowing uh, heavy after, you know, really big storms uh, or in the spring. Um, I do get some erosion in uh. Where I don't have, you know, stones lining the bank and, and that sort of thing, and so uh. But if he gets it all grassed in and that, that ought to uh, well, I guess he'll find out if uh, if it doesn't work. He'll know.
This tractor again.
Yep, he'll, he'll do that, okay, very good, so.
It's up to you on the site visit.
I feel more comfortable, you know, having this discussion now, you know, understanding, you know, Joe's plan and, and what they wanna do now.
Okay, very good, so uh, no motion to uh, to uh, declare it a significant activity and there's no motion to uh. Schedule a site visit. And so, I think at this point, that's probably unless we have other questions, that's all the discussion. On this application, we, we can't act on it at this meeting that uh, you know, we'll end up doing that. At our next meeting. Cause that's just the way the rules work. Okay? Anything else on this application for us, Agent Wagner?
Nope, I think uh, I think we've covered everything.
Good job, Agent Wagner.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, that uh, that completes the, the new business, uh, we'll move on to uh. Item eight, the agent report and enforcement actions.
Alright, so I did have one application that I approved was um. A new house at eighty-eight School Road, um, the house is outside of the Upland Review Area. But the foundation drain. Um, about forty-five feet of the drain and the drain outlet are within the. Hundred foot Upland Review Area, I think it was about sixty feet from the wetlands or something, it's, it was um. A pretty minor uh, activity, but the amount of clearing and stuff, I was, uh, you know, like to construct the drain and, and the trench and stuff and the erosion controls. I had him fill out a, an application and go through that process just so we could get it documented and uh. And then I could keep an eye on it when it's getting built. Um, so that was it, um, I have a couple others that I can talk about too, um, and then the. Notice of violation that I sent to Mr. Nolette, um, I had considered doing a cease and desist in order to remediate. But since he was being so cooperative, um, I decided to just file the notice of violation, which didn't re- require the show cause hearing. That the order to remediate would um. Would require, but we still have that as an enforcement tool, um, if we do need it in the future. Um, at the property, so. If we do need it in the future, um, at the property. So. Um, so basically, yeah, I got, um. It was a couple weeks ago, so. Let's see if I can look it up, um. Was working on it. The notes for this, so it's, so June eighteenth. Received a complaint from, um. Eight fifty East Street. Or no, it was, it was somebody down there. It was below eight fifty East Street. Um, they, they had complained about, um. Sediment in the brook at about eight PM that night, um. And they had sent me a few pictures and then I talked to both residents of eight fifty. They didn't know where it was coming from, um. And then I got. Another.
The sediment that ended up on their property from.
Yeah, so it was getting washed down the stream and that's how I figured out about all this, um. So then I kind of followed it up with, with help from the eight fifty East Street resident, um. Which he, he sent me a picture after another rainfall and then. Um. Then I looked at the aerial photos, kind of traced it back to seven sixty and then contacted him and, uh. What the sediment was, was when he, um. It was Father's Day, dug the whole trench and then at the end he just like blew out the dam and then. Like flushed the pond now onto the, um. On the stream and, uh. That's what caused the big discharge of sediment in there. Um. And so I got the report and. It took a while to figure it out because it was a totally different color than anything that was in that area. Um. So. Yeah, it's kind, kind of glad I figured out where it was coming from and, uh. Obviously instructed him not to. Do that and, you know, I would like to be. Present when. He lowers the pond the next time, once this is all restored. Do it a little more, a little more controlled fashion.
Watch to see what happens.
Hmm.
Okay.
So, and then. Other, um, other stuff I've been working on, the. Community Center, which was approved by PZC. Um, I require a wetland permit for activity in the Upland Review area because some of the. Modifications required by E Z C was a, a rain garden, um. And a tracking pad and the fueling area, which were all in the Upland Review area of the wetland that was behind the fire station. Um. Eric Anderson said that they're. Planning on moving the fueling area out of the Upland Review area, but I was waiting till the. Plan got updated to require the permit application, um, once they have the. Updated site plan, um, so I'll do that. Um. I have the one ninety-six Lake Road one that I just got, um. Last, it was the end of last week, so I'm working on that now, getting some more. Um, I needed a before picture and, uh, some sediment and erosion control. So basically they're rebuilding an existing retaining wall at their property that. Goes down the hill towards a dock that's already on their property. Um, so then there's a, and then there's a. Wooden and gravel staircase that they're rebuilding. Also, uh, an Upland Review area on the shoreline and over lake. Um. So that's on, on the website if you wanna take a look. Um. Thirty-one Lakeside, I'm gonna be getting a. Septic system repair application for that soon. That's also a Upland Review area one, but that'll be on the website. And then I spoke to Ryan Fitch from the. Fitch Family Farm, the Christmas Street Farm about cleaning up the. Trees in that Vernal Pool area and he said. That his crew was planning on starting doing that this week, so. I'll keep you updated on that. It's obviously very visible, so we'll probably know if they're working on it. Um. But yeah, so I've been bugging him to, to get going with that now that it's past, uh. Vernal Pool season. It's a good time to do it. Be nice if there was a little less water around, but kind of is what it is. So that's it, my report.
Okay, any, uh, questions? By the commission for, uh, Agent Wagner at this point? Okay, that, uh, that completes item eight then. Moving on to item nine, other business, uh, which includes, uh. The annual report, election of officers, review of bylaws and membership and recruitment. Um. I think, uh, you know, without having. Bill Monroe here, who. Might be one of the. Uh, candidates for chairman or, uh, you know. I think I would like to hold off on all of the, uh, other business items until. The next meeting. There's no, uh, we're not in a hurry to get the annual report out. Although, uh, you know, I, I think it looked, uh. Very good, um. Without Bill here, I don't wanna hold an election of officers, uh. In, uh. I will let whoever is the new chairman lead the review of bylaws and. The recruiting there. So, uh. With that, uh, we'll move on to item ten, which is the next regular meeting, Monday, August seventh. At seven PM. And, uh. Before I get to adjournment, uh, any comments from, uh? Anybody that's here tonight?
Good job, Jed.
Well, thank you. And my goal was to get done by eight o'clock. That is not quite as fast as we did on the last meeting, but, uh. Okay, we had a pretty substantive, uh, application to talk our way through today and, uh. I think we did that. Okay, I'm not sure what, uh, what will be left for us to talk about next, uh, next month, but, uh, that's okay too, um. So, uh. With that, uh. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I heard Duncan first, uh, on that and, uh. All in favor, uh, you raise your hand and, uh. Okay, uh. I see three hands up, so that makes it unanimous, uh, the motion passes three zero zero. Um, thank you for attending tonight. Thanks for the good report on that application, Joe, uh. I think that, uh, made a hard one. Fairly easy, made, uh, made a lot of good sense there and, uh. We'll see everybody next month.
Good night.
Alright.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.